Okay, let's call the town council meeting to order. And if you will, go on, please, April.
Mayor Holder.
Here.
Councilmember Don.
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Okay, would everybody please stand while we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for a moment of silence, just to introduce that we have a request that we all just, in this moment, turn our prayers, our thoughts, or our meditation, whatever, to the business that we have at hand. We don't have a real long agenda today. I don't see anything really controversial, but we've got important stuff on here. And the most important thing that we're going to do will be select a new council member for vacancy for Rory Burnett. And we've got three applicants who are going to be interviewed. It'll be easy, guys. It'll be short. We don't want to hear too much. But I am so pleased that we have three of you. Because even though two of you are not going to be selected, one of you will. But the other two will have opportunities to serve the town very soon. In fact, I can tell you, all three of you, that there's an opening on the planning commission. Of course, Jeff, that doesn't apply for you because you're already on the planning commission. But then we'll have an April election coming up, so please, 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 don't get discouraged if you, when you don't deserve it. You know, you only got a one in three chance. So let's just get a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here tonight. Public comment. Would anybody like to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting? Don't quite hear the end of the show. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Phil Hudson for from Six Mile Street. We, we have been talking a little bit about Rogers Tax reallocation. We've been talking a little bit about excise tax. I did a little short presentation for the commissioners this morning about ideas. And there, there will be, there will be tax measures in front of the voters in the short term. And it would be so great if the council would do that. Because if you do it, and like if you did it this month or next month, then the rest of us wouldn't have to go door to door and collect hundreds of signatures. So if you like the idea of putting this in front of the voters and letting them choose an excise tax, reallocation of Rogers Tax, if you like that idea, please do it soon. So that, because there's a deadline for us if we're going to do it by petition. There's a deadline that we have to meet in order to get it on the ballot in April. And I'm pretty sure we can put a tax measure on the ballot in April. I think that's allowable for the citizens to do that.
You're talking about January 4th this year.
January 4th to turn in the signatures. So we'd spend Christmas getting signatures, but you, you all could do it with, in a matter of minutes, with a majority vote, to put those measures in front of the voters and let them decide if we really want to support housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let's get right on down to our council member appointment. April, would you explain the procedure that we followed against this one?
Of course. I think the council, so I know Rory Burnett, our council member, who was elected in April of 2020, did resign his seat. So by, what we do by the charter is we appoint someone in that position to fulfill the remainder of that chunk. So they would be appointed until April of 2024. We put it in the paper and on our website asking for people to complete applications if they were interested in sitting on the town council. And we did get three applicants, Mr. Adam Williams, Mr. Gary Williams, and Mr. Jeff Williams. So the process will be we'll ask the three of them to come sit at the table. The mayor, he'll ask questions of each of the three candidates. Afterwards, you know, you can have discussion, and then we'll take a vote. If one of you wants to make a motion to appoint one of the gentlemen to the county, to the court. At that point, if you, if it's approved, then you would swear that person in, then they would take a seat up at the dais.
Is everybody on board with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so gentlemen, if you'd like to have a seat up at the table. And I have been given a set of questions that we've asked before and we've kind of come up with. But we'll only have three for each one of them, so it's not going to be a long drawn out process. And I'm going to start with Mr. Williams. And what are the most important issues facing the town that need to be addressed by the council in the next one in three years?
Well, I've, I've been studying climate change since 1990 and reading about it and keeping up with it. And I think there's some risk for the town that we need to be taking into account, even at this period. I mean, you know, far and long the change is possible. But you might ask yourself, if we have a big forest fire, and so I know this is kind of out of your regular range of thinking, if they have a big forest fire and the transmission lines in the town burn, and you don't have power for six to, you know, 30 days or something, how are you going to manage that? I mean, you can't pump waste up the hill, you know, some people can't get water, you know, so it's all, and you can kind of see what happens with California and stuff. So I, I know that, that it'd be 20 years or it could be three years if we just don't, but we do know the intensity of higher weather is the intergovernmental panel on climate change called the droughts and what is increasing. So that would be one thing I think we should start looking at more soon. I know housing and all that other stuff is, is big and we didn't have to talk about that, but, you know, that's all right. That's one thing I would, I think maybe it's not on the radar, but we should do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Why are you interested in serving on the town council, and what makes you the best of three candidates?
Okay, first thing is I have a bachelor's in science of criminal justice and a master's in public administration. I had dealt with doing public service either as a volunteer or being on nonprofit boards for over 20 years. I've had eclectic paths where I have served security, private consultant, motivational speaking, and also law enforcement. I, of the entire life, I, being the son of Red Buckeyes, I have met a plethora of many different people, many different cultures and diversities. And I have dealt with city politics since I was a gay high kid with my father. And one of the things that I have seen in every town that there is in this country, we have a housing shortage. We have a problem with getting people, you know, to stay here in the town so that we can build, you know, jobs. Right now, we've got many, many jobs. Right now, in Walmart, we're about 50 people from being at minimum capacity. We're at, at City Market, we're about 20 to 25 from getting people in there. Lot of jobs on the paper, all over the town. They can't find anybody to, to work there. Well, one of the reasons why is because the people that were born and raised here or the people that, you know, that are around here, they can't afford to live here. So we need to address, how do we attract the best people to come live in Pagosa? And then what do we do to foster a mentorship to get them in the employment workforce? I think that we have a lot of great things in place with our terrorism and so forth and so forth. But we don't have anything in place to keep the average person here. Now, I break that down. The average person that I know that lives here, that was born and raised here as residents, has to work two to three jobs just to survive. The people that I've worked with at the Archileta County Sheriff's Detention Center, which I'm the detention deputy, 95% of the people that I've worked with do not live in Pagosa, and they cannot afford to live here. So it's becoming more and more tough to afford to live in the town. So if we can't make a, a way of having affordable housing, if we can't make a way to get people to come here and to attract the best of the best, we're always going to have the problems that we're going to have, or we're going to be spinning ourselves on the wheels, round and round, no matter how many great programs we come up with. And I just generally care about people. I care about this town. I have a one-year-old infant child. I have a wife, you know, has multiple sclerosis. We came here because we wanted to give our daughter a better life, and this place is magical. And there's such a diversity here, and I, all I see in this town is, is possibility. We're doing great right now, but we could be doing so much better. And so I'm putting myself out on the front line because I was raised to be the changish seed. If you don't like something, you got to do something about it. You can't just sit there and complain that you want to change something if you're not willing to put yourself on the front line. And so I'm here because I care about the town, I care about people, and I have a history of service, and I just want to get it back. That's why I feel that I'm qualified to be on the council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Williams, describe a time that you did not agree with the decision of the group. And then, think about that. How did you handle it?
The decision of this group or the group that I've been a part of?
Just a group, a, a board, a...
On the planning commission, I've served about two years on the planning commission. There was a vote that came up that recommended that the town council consider spending all the surplus budget of, was it last fiscal year, I believe, on workforce housing. And I was the sole nay vote. The reason I was the sole nay vote is I, I didn't think it was appropriate to recommend spending that money without finding a way to have a constant revenue stream that came from the causal elements of, that was causing the workforce housing situation. So I voted against it. And then we moved on to the next item, and I still liked everybody on the board, and we still got along. And I really forgot that I voted against it. And so I, I, I mean, I don't really know if I get into it any better than that, except that I, I, I'm not going to stand up and throw a hissy fit. That's ridiculous. I made my vote and then go to the next one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, what experiences have you had serving on boards and commissions and making decisions as a team?
Well, I'm sure I'm being you, well, community oriented. I, I've, was president of Habitat at least back then. I, in leadership role, I think, is you have to get people excited about moving forward with things, you know. And so I, I was successful in getting people to go along with the green building program. We put geothermal heat pumps in our houses, you know, oriented in the south, so, you know, sort of kind of green building thing. And started to have that restore, which became a steady funding strength of our organization. And it, it's mostly, what would you say, using your talents to get people excited about prospects and not be afraid of, you know, the possible downside of the census. You know, that's one example.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buckeyes?
Yes, sir.
What issues the council has dealt with over the past two years interest you most?
Two things. Again, terrorism is something that really interests me, but also the fact of, you know, the employment and the housing situation, it all comes together in one big dynamic. If we can build, you know, all this great stuff and have all these great programs in place and have all these structures in place, but if we don't have the main component in place, like making it attractive to have good people here, then everything that we build is going to go to waste. And so like I said, the employment issue, getting people to work, attracting the right people to come here, and really, you know, taking what we have and making it better and creating a synergy, a relationship, of partnerships with different organizations in this town. It's funny that we have all these great organizations in this town, but we lack a coordinating council for people to work together to be the nice one, and that's something that I'd love to do.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Williams, how do you feel that you will be most effective serving on the town council?
Asking hard questions. I like to ask hard questions, even myself, and I like to shift perspective. I'm never happy is when I think I've figured something out and somebody makes a statement that, wow, that's a different way to look at that that I have never thought about before. Yet, my father was a research chemist, and he was the same one. He liked to figure something out and then challenge it. How is it different than what you thought it was? And I, I think that's a loaded question.
All right, back to you, Mr. Williams. Last question for you is tell us about your current interests and why you are interested in local government?
So I've always been interested in community and social well-being. And I've studied that since the early 70s. And I started my career as a Peace Corps volunteer, you know, working with communities overseas. Ask me the question again.
Okay, but tell us about your current interests, okay, and why you're interested in local government?
So I'm interested in local government because of the community satisfaction, community well-being stuff. We, I've been serving on the Spirit Committee for land use development, Jeff, and so, you know, we're obviously interested in creating a future for the community that's positive and creates a high quality of life. And for me, housing has always been an issue. You know, I've mentioned Habitat East. I joined the board Habitat here and working on the Habitat House. I'm interested in affordable housing, how I can play a role in that. And I, and I know you guys are all on top of it, so I don't know if it'd be difficult here, but housing has always been important. To me, it's always brought us a lot of satisfaction. I've helped other people in town work on their houses, you know, to bring joy to their lives. And so I'm, you know, I think that board's action here recently on children rentals, I think was a very good step in the right direction. They help us deal with the housing problem and all that. I, I think, I was just going to comment that I've been working in the west, the Rock Mountain West, since the 1970s. And the history is one of boom towns, you know, everywhere out of boom town, boom or bust town. And, and I think, and they're all natural resource community, based communities. That is, you extract some resources, our resources, tourism, skiing, you know, on the outdoors. But that can change, as I mentioned, forest fires and so forth. So I guess as we all contemplate our housing and affordable housing and moving forward and doing it in a controlled and progressive way, the idea that we could hit bus cycles should also be under consideration. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
Okay, Mr. Buckeyes, your last question. Is as council members, you're just one of seven and are only affected as a body making decisions, then could you describe for us an experience or you've had working with others as a part of a group? And you told us about some, but if you go ahead, explain.
All right, back in California, I was on a task force for the city of Westminster, homelessness, homelessness needs task force. And as you know, homeless problem in California is, is not good. And we had to come up with ideas, to come up with either a shelter or, or partner up with another city. And I went in and I attended every one of those meetings, where a lot of my colleagues unfortunately did not. And I went down and I really put my heart into trying to find a solution to help the city of Westminster. And there were things that I said that were not popular, but the need is to be said because I believe the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one. You've got to be able to put some skin in the game and really put your heart into something because you're dealing with people's lives. And as a city council person on the council, you're dealing with people's lives. And people think, oh, no, local government doesn't, you know, it's not that important. But local government is the foundation of what this country is made of. What we do here helps, it's like a wildfire chain of events. It affects all the way up to the federal level. So I, I, I spoke out against, you know, certain expenditures of money, wasteful fiscal spending, going to programs that I knew that were not going to help the homeless problem. And I, I was brave, and I, and I worked, you know, with the people that I was on the task force with, and I, and I, and I fought for the people. Not for special interests, not for, you know, what they want, but what was good for the people. And as a councilman, you know, I'm going to serve and be, and abide by the United States Constitution. And I'm going to abide by, you know, the oath that I take. And that is to serve the people and make them a part of it because I, I work for them, and we're public servants. And sometimes I think politicians forget that they, they work for the people. And so I'm going to give my heart and soul and try really hard to work with my fellow councilmen, because Dale Carnegie says, I don't give friends and influence people, to work together to find what we have in common, what we do agree, and work as a team, because a team, together everyone achieves more. And get some things done and, you know, and deal with the real issues and, and come up with some, with some solid answers that I think that'll help everybody, because right now, I've never seen, like I said before, I've never seen so many job openings in my life, in my 51 years that I've seen here. And it's insane to me that we can't get quality people to go to work. So that's what I think we need to, to focus on as a council, to attract the right people in our area so that we can get ourselves out there again. Because I believe that we can fix the problems. I believe we can do miraculous things. All we have to do is get out of our own way, and we have to give up our ego. And that's why I want to serve. I just, bottom line, I just want to get back. And I, and I, and my daughter is motivating me, because I want my daughter to grow up in a good community. I want my daughter to have an opportunity to have the things that I never had. I want her to be able to see that with hard work and determination and time patience and perseverance, that she can, that she can make a difference. And if she doesn't see her dad do this, she's never going to learn. And that's why I'm here, and that's why I want to get back. I hope that's a good enough answer.
Thank you. Okay, your last question. What is your vision for the town over the next five years?
Only five?
Just for you.
Oh, boy. I've been thinking about 25-year plans, so five-year plan. You know, we've got so many little things going on that are creeping up to big things. Mr. Buckeyes said we're a magical town. We are. It's a magical place. And why can't I move here because, partly, largely because of walkability? We're two blocks from a grocery store. I mean, I could walk to a Costco. I love that. Never lived in a place like that before. I love this place and walkability. And you guys, the council, has made this a supremely more walkable place in the last five, 10, 15 years by adding more trails, pathways, bridges, et cetera. This is a wonderful place to walk around, and it's getting more wonderful to walk around. And I hope that, I know in the next five years, it will be even more wonderful to walk around this town. And walkability is kind of my thing. I try not to preach it, but I mentioned it a lot on the planning commission because it's so tied to everything else. You have to have good parking so people can get out of their cars and walk if you want walkability. You've got to have a good traffic plan so that you can walk without feeling like you're going to get killed by a semi truck. You have to have interesting shops and businesses that are staffed by employees who can and want to work to have interesting things to look at. You've got to have public art because you want to be delighted at every turn and every corner. And we're on track to do that, and I'd like to just help that along and add to it because I know that here, I'm dying. I want it to be better by the end of the year.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Council, any discussion?
Can you ask follow-up questions?
I'll tell you why. Let's go ahead, and each one of you can ask a follow-up question, okay?
Okay.
And you can pick whichever one you want to ask that question to.
Okay, so, well, is there?
Seems like you might have had a question.
Well, I kind of had a question for each, so if you guys have, if you want to go first, I'll take the last. I guess I'll start with Mr. Darrow. I'll just go, Mr. Buckeyes, you talked about affordable housing. We've talked about putting aside a $500,000 pocket of money to do something with it. What would you say in the next, this fiscal year coming up, what would you do with $500,000 to be most effective?
Well, first thing is we have to really get to the bottom of the affordable apartments. We need to deal, like I said before, we have residents that are born and raised here, and they can't afford to live here anymore. We need to get the people that were born and raised here, that have gone through our schools, that have gone through our institutions, we need to make it attractive for them to want to stay. A lot of young people I know want to leave because they don't see the future here. So first thing we use when we put that money in a place where we make it attractive enough to make the young people want to stay here, to give them incentives. We can also need to mentor, so we need to come up with some programs to really go back to mentorship. We need to go back to basics that we used to have in the schools with, you know, occupational programs and stuff like that. We need to get back to basics. And that's, you know, that's what I would do, is, you know, get the lifeblood of this town, the young kids. We need to get them engaged in this process, and I feel we are open with them. They are the future, and if we don't take care of the future, we're not going to, we're not going to be as powerful in the next 20 years as we are now. And that's what I would do.
Yeah. Do you girls want to ask a question of one of the candidates, or? Go ahead, sure.
Not right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have a question.
Okay, then what I'd like to do is give you guys a chance, since we only have one extra question coming up from council, to answer that same question.
Sure, or I could ask them each different questions, or do you think that's the best?
If you want to do that, fine.
Okay, so, Mr. Williams, you talked about, you know, the wildfires in the future. What as a town can we practically do?
That's an interesting question. I, I think the first thing I'd do is some kind of assessment of vulnerability, supportive vulnerability. You know, it's how are you, how are the different directions, what, what happens if, how do you manage that? You talk to LDA, you know, and, and I don't know about the infrastructure in town to know if you have generators for all your backup, sewage pumps and that kind of stuff, but that's a type of thing you can't look into. You know, fundamentally, you've got to get water and sewers taken care of first, you know, for public health purposes. You know, and then you can worry about all the other stuff. One of the things that you would carry that out logically to is we have this situation where we fund city governmental sales packs, and the sales tax drops precipitously because nobody's coming to town because the whole area can burn. How are you going to fund government? So, you know, there, there are a lot of things to do. If I got to start with some kind of basic assessment of what our vulnerabilities are and what we do now.
If I had to start with some kind of basic assessment of what our vulnerabilities are and what we do about it. You know, I mean, and there could be things like, and, you know, I haven't thought about this, but, you know, we just gave up our sewage lagoons. We need to reconsider that as a fallback solution. It came a long ways up hills, you know, it's just those kind of things. They're hard decisions. You've got to spend money. And one of the problems when you're dealing with risk is you spend a lot of money. If disaster doesn't show up, it looks like you wasted a lot of money. So, but we know that, you know, it's just an issue of time. It's not weather, it's going to happen. It's just going to be in the next three years, the next 10 years. From the climate perspective.
You have a question for?
Okay, sure. So, um...
You're all with you, fair chance, yeah. Come on, never forgotten.
No, you might as well, yeah. Might as well think about what's up.
Okay, well, the walkability, you made a very eloquent like support of the walkability and why it's important and what... I'm not totally sure where I was going to go with your question, actually. So I'll think about that for a minute. Okay, other than walkability, it's 30 years in the future since you talked about 25-year plan. Wow. 25 years. What are you most proud of? Say you do get on Town Council. What are you most proud of, of what we've done at this moment? Do you know what I'm saying?
As of this moment?
Yeah, so say you get on Town Council and you're on it for the next couple of years. What do you think that in the future you'll be most proud of?
Over the next maybe couple of years if we do it.
What do you think you would want to be part in your legacy at this term?
Well, I don't think in terms of my legacy, I don't think in that term. So if I can backtrack a little bit and then maybe spin forward. So there are a couple of things that you guys have done recently that I think have had great effect. One is the density bonus and one is the reduction in size of a minimum dwelling unit. Those two things directly resulted in the Pagosa En suites converting to a workforce housing situation. And even though there's some questions on deep restriction of how long those are retained, if you look at their business plan, their expenses and the square footage they're offering, those will probably always be in the workforce housing rent realm because they're just tiny little spots. And it's, you know, you're not going to be a rich guy from Texas moving here and you're moving to that spot. You won't do that. But for temporary workforce housing or maybe moderately long-term housing, that was a brilliant couple of dominos to knock over that have had that result. So while I think about that kind of stuff a lot, it's like, what's that domino you can knock over that's going to have an effect down the road when all of those dominos knock over? Because the power of the council is largely leveraged in the budget, which is, if you ask me what my weakest thing is on planning commission, we're going to deal with budgets. So that walking in, because we're going to discuss budget tonight, that'd be my first encounter. So that directly, other than being a consumer and reading reports about that. But the power of the purse, the budget, every dollar you spend, if you can leverage that up and get more dollars out of it, then you have a lot more activity, a lot more things going on, a lot more good results. So, well, I just like to really analyze things like that. Find a few dominos we can knock over that have a long-term effect like those two things that I mentioned. Because they seem so tiny and almost you're over in and of themselves, but you aggregate them together and the market responds and you've got something really good. So I will find more of those.
All right, I think we're done with the questioning. Everybody's on the other end. So we're now down to decision time. So would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd be interested.
Yes, you may.
I don't think we can make a decision tonight. We have some really great candidates. And I would encourage whoever is not appointed tonight to really, really consider running for council in our April election. I think it would all be a great process to the council. And thank you very much.
Thank you. She just took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
There's another discussion. Do we need to have discussion?
I guess I'd like to say, just to echo that, you guys are all great candidates. And this is an awkward process doing this. And I really appreciate you putting in for your name and your energy here tonight. And we're going to have Madeline, me, and Matt DeGuys in his seats all go up in April as well as the mayor. So that's a lot of vacancies that I'll...
Well, I just want to say after I've heard Jeff Potter, I'd like him to do it wrong. I think his experience on the planning commission is very important. Well, you've proven on the way he's steering it, maybe that you're qualified. And I can tell by my...
Well, and I definitely agree. As I read over the applications, I felt very fortunate that we received such strong applications. But I do kind of feel strongly along the lines of Mr. Williams that I do think that Jeff's experience on the planning commission would be wildly beneficial and a good transition to move up into the council rank. So if we are ready for a motion, I would move to appoint Jeff Posey to win at-large Town Council seat for the remainder of the term.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, shake your hand by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get up here. General, we now have two openings on the planning commission.
That's a wild one.
Just for me.
He's shaking the box on my...
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Yes, and thank you. And I hope to see you guys again in the future.
Yes.
Stay involved.
Thank you. Thank you for having me come down.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, congratulations.
See you later.
Okay. All right.
I blank. Can I say that? I, Jeff Posey, will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado and the laws made pursuant thereto. Will faithfully support the town of Pagosa Springs and their home rule charter ordinances and resolutions and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Town Council upon which I am about to enter with my entire heart, soul, and people.
I'm just going to get a picture or do it in person? Do you mind if I get a picture?
What confession?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right in the budget.
So let's go on down to consent agenda. Is there anything on that that you would like to take off for further discussion? Draw on our data wire.
Mr. Mayor, I've been that paper who needs sent agenda.
Second.
He's joking right there.
Did you get that, April? All in favor, shake your hand by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass to the chairman. Okay. This will go on down then to unfinished business. Ooh.
Proclamation.
Thank you.
Got you.
I almost beat you. Okay.
Can I, actually, before you do that, I am reminiscing about when I got elected and it was right around this time and our first vote, it was a split vote and so we had to do roll call. And April, do you remember when you called my name, I said here? Oh, here, yeah, come on now. You did way better than me.
Okay. On the consent agenda, the proclamation for domestic violence awareness month. So I would like to read this if I could. And I know. I want proclaiming October 2021 as domestic violence awareness month in Pagosa Springs. In the town of Pagosa Springs, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Rise Above Violence to work toward the elimination of intimate partner violence. Whereas, last year in 2020, Rise Above Violence served 400 victims. And whereas, on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than 10 million women and men. Whereas, the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and the nation as a whole. And whereas, children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the normal average rate. And whereas, domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. Each who can do one thing that adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Therefore, we, the Pagosa Springs Town Council, proclaim the month of October 2021 as domestic violence awareness month in Pagosa Springs, Colorado. We wish for our citizens and visitors to know there is always help available through Rise Above Violence. And we will show our support throughout this month and the entire year. And it's signed. Okay, now let's go on down to unfinished business, which is ordinance 960. It's the second reading of bending the definition of animals running at large. And Clay, would you please introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is the second reading of ordinance number 960. An ordinance admitting the definition of animal running at large. I explained the background and detail of this previously in the first reading, which passed unanimously. At this time, it is going before the board for both that second reading. So it's your questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. This is the second reading of the ordinance. So would anybody like to make public comment? Okay, I see no hands, so closed for public comment. Any discussion? Sure, we'll entertain a motion. Please, sure.
I'm going to approve second reading of ordinance number 960 as presented. Second.
We got a second. All in favor, shake your hand by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, pass to the chairman, I'm sorry. New business, introduction of the proposed 2022 budget and the 10-year capital plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember Posey.
Thank you.
I'm excited to present the 2022 budget and capital plan for you. I'm going to just start my presentation here. Okay, I'm going to hide this. Okay, so before we get started, I would like to thank April Hessman, who did the Yom and Share, putting together this beautiful binder with all of this light reading for the Town Council. It's a lot of work and she spends many, 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 many hours writing different scenarios, taking the budget requests from all the different department heads and putting it together in a pretty document. So I want to say thank you, April, because you always do a fantastic job of putting together this budget. So this is the 2022 fiscal year budget and capital plan. Mr. Posey, we will make sure that we get you a hard copy of this as well unless you're already... Okay, you've got it. Okay. So per state statute, I'm required to introduce this to you by October 15th, the way that our meeting's spelled. We're doing that tonight. This is our first attempt at putting together the fiscal year budget. We're really not going to get in unless you have perfect questions that you want to ask tonight. We're really going to try to save those for your budget work sessions where, like we have in the past, we get into the details of the assumptions and get feedback from you on what you might want to change. So this is really just our first attempt at putting this together. So a little bit about the budget. This is a very important document. It sets our expenditure expectations for the coming fiscal year. It also makes our revenue assumptions from different sources. It starts with a policy document, so this sets out what we're going to be doing through the, as our work plan through the year. It's a communication tool to the community. We're always trying to get more participation in the budgeting process and we're going to be really trying to do a push now that we've introduced it through my Pagosa, through our social media, and through our e-moves letter to try to encourage people to be part of these discussions and share their feedback and input. It provides transparency for taxpayers on how their taxes are being spent or plans to be spent on services and projects. As you know, council adopts a budget each December for the following fiscal year and we budget and appropriate by fund. Purchases are made then throughout the year according to our purchasing policy, which, as you know, we revised this year and also our municipal code. So in terms of schedule, council held your annual retreat on July 15th and after that, you adopted in August your set of goals and objectives for the remainder of 2021 into 2022. Now, I will say that some of those goals are going to take us well beyond 2022 to accomplish, but we do have within this budget, I think, at least every area of your goals and objectives at least covered in some form or fashion. But those goals and objectives form our basis for how we put our budget together. So it's a combination of what council would like to see from a policy perspective in terms of where you'd like to go in the coming year, as well as the departmental knowledge of projects and things that we know that need to be taken care of. We asked each of our department heads to do a departmental budget request and that included their training, opportunities, any equipment or vehicles that they wanted, any staffing requests, capital items and such. Those were due to April and I by the end of August and then April and I made the sausage and tried to put everything together over the month of September. The town manager, by state statute, has to introduce the budget to you by October 15th. We're doing that this evening. And then we're hoping that you will give us some dates and times when you might be available to do those budget work sessions. Of course, those will be open to the public. And that's where, as you know, we go through the details of the different funds and hopefully get feedback from you all on what you would like to see changed within that or had. And then council must certify the mill levy for property taxes to the county and adopt the final budget by December 15th of each year. So our goal would be to do the December 7th meeting. So in between now and December 7th, lots of time for us and me to discuss and invite the public to participate, add, delete things. Just some reminders, our fiscal year mirrors the calendar year. So January 1st to December 31st is our fiscal year. We do fund accounting and you'll see that as we move forward in this, we have six town funds plus our sanitation district, which is a separate budget. And we also are required by state law to introduce to the Urban Renewal Authority Board a budget. However, I will tell you now, it's zero. We have zero resources, zero expenditures planned, but we are required still to introduce it by October 15th and to adopt it. So our funds are our general fund, capital fund, our lodgers or tourism fund, our conservation trust fund, geothermal fund, our impact fund slash trust accounts, which is kind of a mismatch of a lot of different restricted land items all pushed into one fund. And then our sanitation fund. Our reserve policy is that we follow Tabor, so the tax... Our reserve policy is that we follow Tabor, so the tax paid building rights, which is a 3% reserve, plus the town has adopted a policy of a minimum of three months of operating funds on top of that. So our council strategic goals that were adopted in August are big ones. Some of them are really big and are going to take us years. Some of them are maybe more short term in nature. Workforce housing, the number one goal, that moved up in priority just even in the last year. Workforce housing, and that is, we'll talk about that here in the introduced budget, but obviously a very important priority for the town council and the community. Completing our update of the Land Use and Development Code, that is already underway, and we are hoping to have that adopted and implemented this in the spring of 2022. Traffic management, parking, and road maintenance, that is, again, that's a big topic, and there's a lot in there. Short-term rentals, policy issues related to that, lodging tax, the discussion around that during the retreat was whether there should be a reallocation of how those funds are spent or even an increase to that. Economic development and diversification, sanitation district, staffing. I will say that with staffing, and you'll see this in our introduced budget, and I think I've said this to you multiple times, that as the town grows in population and complexity, and we are adding more programs and things that you want staff to do, we're going to have to grow our staff because we are very, we're multitaskers, and all the staff is amazing, but we're going to have to start augmenting in some key areas in order to achieve some of the things that the council wants to see happen. Just continuing those strategic goals, trails and sidewalk development and maintenance, the urban renewal authority, parks and river access, the east side gateway, and that's our east side multimodal plan, which is kicking off now, in fact, tomorrow, if you're interested. There is a public session tomorrow at the community center. Public arts advisory boards, and with advisory boards, that was really related to intercommunication or interpersonal communication between the different boards, making sure that everyone has the appropriate training and that sort of thing to carry out the different goals and objectives of the town. Land acquisition strategy, store preservation and broadband. Now, these are just the titles of those strategic goals. You'll find as an attachment in the packet and in your binder, the action steps or objectives within each of those goal areas. So this is the revenues by fund, and as you can see, for all funds, the largest ones are capital improvements fund, which is where, you know, we do all of our capital projects, our infrastructure, our trails, our street maintenance, things like that. Our general fund is our next largest one. Sanitation and lodgers are 1.7 and 1.3 million respectively. And then the smaller funds in terms of revenues are geothermal, conservation trust, and impact and trust account. So those are rather small in comparison. And these do not include, these revenues are annual revenues, they don't include our fund balances. So this is, it may be a little hard to see, but this chart, or this pie chart on the left is showing you our general fund, and this is our projected revenues from different sources. Eighty-eight percent of our revenues come from taxes and contracts, which are really our franchises and things like that, ground leases. But as you can see from the table, 4.4 million, the largest share of that category is our sales tax. So we really do live and die on sales tax, and that's why I record it to you every month. And council every year has adopted, for 10 years, has adopted a policy whereby we can ratchet down expenditures if we need to, of course, seeing trends in that sales tax figure that are concerning to us. Luckily, we've had strong sales tax growth, and that has continued year over year, but that may not always be the case. Now, we do have some minor franchise agreements, like Black Hills. We've got ground leases for some of our towers at Reservoir Hill, where they pay us to essentially have equipment, telecommunications equipment. Property tax were 1.15 mils, so which amounts to $107,000. So where the county has, you know, that's one of their largest revenue sources, ours is sales tax. So just jump in if you guys have questions, I'm just going to keep rolling. Sales tax assumptions. So despite COVID, we are still seeing population increasing, building permits continue to come in, people are still building, we are seeing some new businesses coming in, tourism continues to be strong. The Wayfair decision that occurred back in 2019 did have an impact on our collection of online sales tax. So just as a refresher on that, we used to not receive tax revenues when people would purchase items on Amazon or what have you that were shipped here, but ever since the summer of 2019, we have been, and that has been a nice uptick in our sales tax revenues. We are estimating that 2021 is going to end at 22% higher than what we had originally budgeted, and then for 2022, we are projecting another 6% above that. So 28% increase for next year compared to what we had budgeted originally for this year. That would amount to about 8.8 million. And just as a reminder, we split those funds equally with the county, and then our portion that we receive goes half to the general fund and then half to the capital fund. And it's 80% of our general fund revenues and 75% of our capital fund. Okay, expenditures by type. I don't know if you all can see this, but this is just showing you kind of the major categories of how we categorize our expenditures. Personnel is the blue part of the pie there, and that's across all funds. The orange is commodities or supplies. Contractual is, you know, any kind of services that we're contracting out for, and then capital improvements or projects is the yellow. Okay, so where the departments fall. The general fund includes our administration department, which is myself, April, Kathy Parker, who's our HR and records administrator, as well as new positions that we're going to be proposing. We also have different administration, all the stuff that doesn't fall anywhere else, so town attorneys in there, council expenditures, dues and subscriptions for the town, IT, insurance, all the other stuff that serves all of the town goes into administration. So it looks large when you compare that maybe to some of the other departments, but it really is providing enterprise-wide services. The community development is something new I am proposing for town council's consideration in 2022. This is a combination of two separate departments. So currently, building and fire safety is a department. Planning department is a separate department. I am proposing that we bring those together and that we add a housing division with a housing coordinator. So I'll kind of get into the details of what that looks like, but the community development department is very common in a lot of communities. Some call it development services, some call it community development or something similar. But really, I think it makes a lot of sense to combine all of those efforts and then ideally co-locate them in a one-stop shop within town hall so that people aren't going up and down the stairs to go to the building department and then go to planning. I think you can see a lot of efficiencies there. Our police department's also in the general fund, municipal courts, and then our rec side of our parks and rec department. Parks and rec has a recreation division and a parks maintenance division. Parks maintenance is in capital, recreation division is in general fund. Utility funds include our sanitation and our geothermal fund. Our capital fund supports all of our projects and our streets division, which is in public works, our facilities division, which is in public works, and then also our parks maintenance division out of the parks and rec department. And then our lodgers fund supports all of the staff that work for the tourism department and the visitor center. Expenditure by fund. So as you can see, the largest blue piece, the darker blue, is our capital improvements, and that's a little over 6 million, or 41% of our all-funds budget. Our all-funds budget expenditures for 2022, as proposed, is 14.8 million. Our general fund is 35%, or a little over 5 million. Sanitation is 1.8, the lodgers is 10%, and then geothermal, conservation trust, and impact or trust account are very small. Geothermal says 0%, but it's probably like 0.04 or something like that, just rounding down. So this is a functional organizational chart. As you can see up at the very top, the citizens of Pagosa Springs are who we're all working for as public servants. So they are at the top of the org chart, if you will, the town council underneath them, the town manager, the town attorney, and the municipal court judge appointed and serving the town council. And then these are the various departments and functional organizational areas. So administration, as I mentioned, is kind of the catch-all bucket for everything that doesn't fit anywhere else and serves all of the town functions, but it specifically includes the clerk function, finance, and human resources. There's a whole lot of other things in there that aren't listed, but these are kind of the primary functions. The municipal court also includes probation function. Parks and recreation includes our community center, parks maintenance and management, as well as our recreation division and programming. Community development is the new department, if you will, and that function would include planning, both short and long-term development review, building and fire safety inspections, as well as housing. Under police, investigations is a major function. We do have a detective that assists us with that, as well as an evidence technician. Patrol, animal control and code enforcement. I do want to point out that nuisance code enforcement used to be under the building and fire safety department, and we have moved that under the police department, and I think it's working out rather nicely. We have a officer who is sworn officer providing animal control part-time as well as nuisance code enforcement. Under public works, facilities, management, streets, maintenance, and utilities are functional areas, and then under tourism, we have marketing and the visitor center. And I'm not necessarily going to go through all of this, and it's really hard to see. There is, but this is also in your budget document, but this is the actual staffing allocation under those organizational areas. I do want to point out just a few things, though. We are proposing some staffing changes and some additions. Under the administration department, I am proposing that we reclassify our HR and records manager to be a more holistic administrative services manager. That position is really more all-encompassing than just those two functions, and that we also hire an administrative analyst to help take, frankly, some of the things off my plate that I just don't have time to, and then also a lot of it goes to April and Kathy. So we've really, in order to kind of implement some of the things that are on the back burner and to move those forward, I would like to add that position. The community development department would include, again, those three divisions. I am proposing a community development director to oversee that department, a housing manager or coordinator, and a part-time main street coordinator. We've kind of let the main street program and certain preservation board function kind of fall by the wayside just from lack of staffing. We just don't have the capacity to implement that and move it forward, so we're proposing a part-time position that would be under the planning division to help out with that. No staffing changes proposed for the court administrator, nor for parks and recreation, except for reclassifying two parks maintenance ones to a two. And in police department, we are proposing, well, just stepping back a little bit, if you recall, just this spring, there were some staffing changes. We did a whole compensation survey for the police department and implemented quite a few changes to get their salaries on par with market. We also changed the staffing levels a bit to now have a sergeant instead of a corporal, and then we also reclassified lieutenant Brown to an assistant chief. We also are proposing an additional patrol officer, additional police officer, and that is by request of Chief Rockensaw, and we are seeing quite a bit of, you know, additional traffic in town and a need for more staffing there to assist with that. As I mentioned, the code enforcement function is a part-time function that fluctuates throughout the year, and right now, that's being filled with the same part-time person who's doing animal control. The CRO, SRO position is a community resources officer slash school resources officer. They work in the schools along with two, Franchilla County deputies for nine months a year while school's in session, and we receive $41,000 from that contract, which goes to that person's salary, and then in the summer, they work on patrol for us in the summer. In public works, there's no changes there except for classifying one equipment operator to a three, and then in tourism, no changes right now. So that equates to an additional 4.5 FTEs above what we currently have authorized. That's 49 full-timers. I'll get you copies of this presentation stuff, so you don't have to take those unless you want to. That's 49 full-time, 11 part-time, plus we have a host of seasonal individuals who help us with our kids' summer camp, the, you know, serve as umpires and other seasonal staff to assist us in the summer months with different programs. So I kind of went through all of this. I don't know, yeah, I think I touched on all of this, so I'm not sure if there's anything I can say on there. I'll just keep it moving. Luckily, our insurance, which does increase every year, is only increasing 2.5% in 2022. Just as a bit of background, we have a broker who goes out and shops our plan to different health insurance companies every year to see, you know, if we can get a better deal. Right now, we're with Cigna, and without making any plan changes, we did make some a couple of years ago, but without making any plan changes, we're going to be staying to, will be an increase of 2.5%. Now, we're in a type of plan where we get a refund if we don't have any major claims. But the end of each year, we get a little bit of a refund based on that, and we are proposing to absorb that health insurance premium increase with our refund so that we're not passing it on to staff. The Fire Police Pension Association, which is FPPA, has a statewide mandatory increase of a half a percent per year, and that's both for the employer and for our sworn officers. So that is assumed in the budget. I mentioned we did...
Clay, sorry, can you use this a second?
Oh, sure. Should I turn my mic on or not? Do you want to test it? Go to test mic, and then I'll just pop, and then it'll go backwards.
Are you watching this?
Yes. But I don't have my mic on. Do you like me to turn it on?
Yeah, try it.
Okay, is that working? Does it seem like it's coming through? It says talking there. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. But I don't know if it's going to cut from zoom. It should on here, okay. All right. But I don't know if it's going to cut from zoom. It should on here, okay. Mysterio. Okay. Should I just? Should I just go or should I? Okay. So let's see here. So we did adjust the pay scale for the law enforcement officers and leadership. So we did adjust the pay scale for the law enforcement officers and leadership in the spring of 2021. And those do, that does include a step increase for our officers, and that's included within the budget assumptions. We're continuing our seven percent retirement match, which is subject to five-year vesting. And that would be for full-time employees who are not FPPA members. And we're also proposing to move the pay scale. So the pay scale has not been moved since 2019. So if you remember back in 2018, we did a full compensation survey for all the staff. We just did ones, we separated out and did a separate one for the law enforcement. But for the rest of the staff, it hasn't moved. So we did go ahead and adjust that three percent, just because we haven't moved it for the last three years. And then on top of that, what our philosophy has been as a town is to try to move employees closer to the scale towards the market within their pay scale for that position. So we do have some assumptions within the personnel budget that would adjust salaries for staff to bring them closer in their pay scale. The amount that we budget depends on the years of service and where they fall within the scale. Does it still be working?
Okay. It's still giving me this error. Right, James, he's going to go on in a minute.
And just see if it came here or not. All right, I'll just keep rolling then. So our general fund is five-point-one-five million is our planned expenditure, our proposed expenditure. And that supports five departments, which is administration, community development, our parks and recreation, but just our recreation division, police department and municipal court, plus the council goals and initiatives, service organization support, technology, attorney, et cetera. So for 2022, in administration, these are just kind of some highlights. I wanted to just point out that we do have our town attorney funded in there. And we also have within the attorney line items, we've consolidated those. For some reason, we had like a little bit for code compliance within the building and fire safety department. So that's been now incorporated within admin department. We're also continuing. Oh, you can't, you couldn't hear it?
No.
I have to restart it.
You, yeah. Why don't you use your mic?
Oh, it's me.
I mean, all of this is awesome.
So you've got this budget all down great, don't you?
Are you, you're sworn to your team.
Yes. You want me to stop share?
Yeah, just stop share.
Okay.
There's a lot of speeds.
Oh, yeah.
Started yesterday. I don't know.
Yeah, I go over my, my mom's, but there's something in there, but yeah. Well, great, because I'm right next to her. A little water in the meeting. I'm trying to get back in. That's an offset.
You don't let me back in this.
Okay. James, can you hear me?
You're, I think you're.
Oh. Can you hear me now? You can hear me now, okay. Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. We're going to go ahead and rejoin the meeting. We're having some technical difficulties. I apologize for that. The folks who are joining us by Zoom. So we'll go ahead and get back to where we were. I'm going to share my screen quickly. We won't be able to see it here.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Until I get back up.
Oh, gosh. Okay. All right. They say it's there. Okay.
They can hear it through the control computer.
Yeah. Can they see the screen?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Okay. All right, getting back into it here. We were just talking about some general fund expenditures. So in admin, we also are including a communications manager contract once again. Technology board of the departments, including the different software, as well as tech, uh, computer replacements. We're glad to pay again for the parade and the fireworks show, which we do share fifty-fifty with the tourism department. And we are, as I mentioned earlier, hoping to add an administrative analyst.
I'm going to join the computer audio, so I may do something very. Can you not share first?
All right, sorry, continue. So I should mute then?
Recording in progress.
Okay. All right. So.
So reshare.
Okay, reshare. All right. I'm glad you guys ground snapped. Okay. All right, we're back to it. Okay. Building and fire safety is going to be organized within the new community development department, and we'll continue with the staffing levels that we currently have. In planning, we are proposing to organize that under our new community development department. We do want to finish our land use code update. We've got funds budgeted in next year to complete that project. As I mentioned earlier, we have a part-time main street coordinator position that we're proposing. And we also have twenty thousand, once again, for public art. I'm hoping that the tourism department will also match that so that between tourism, general fund, and maybe some outside funding from Coosa Arts Initiative, we can continue to implement more fun public art for, to live in the town. The housing division is new. For the last several years, planning department has been working on this. And then I've been spending a lot of my time on trying to push housing initiatives forward. I think it's time that we, you know, put our money where our mouth is and devote significant funding to implementing workforce housing instead of making it just another duty that we're all trying to do. So I have proposed that this be a new division within our community development department and that we staff it with a housing coordinator or manager. Would really just be a division of one for now. But there are significant general fund and SDR surcharge monies also within that. So we've got over a half million dollars proposed within that budget line. And I think we can do a lot of great things with that. Municipal courts, no substantial changes there. Let's see here. Now I'm getting all confused. Okay, moving on. This is just a pie chart showing you the different, oh, I guess I can do it as a slideshow. I'm sorry. So these, this is just a breakdown of the various general funds, departments and divisions. As you can see, the police department is the largest share at one-point-four million. Administration is the next largest one. And just as a reminder, this is not just staffing, but it's kind of stuff that doesn't fit anywhere else and serves the entire town, so that gets kind of lumped in there. Our new housing division is our next largest one at five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And that includes that staff person, as well as programmatic funding to make some cool things happen. The planning division at four-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, just for budgeting purposes, because we didn't know where else to put it. That includes the community development director within the planning division. But functionally, they're, you know, in charge of the entire department. Rec division, and that's the one side of the parks and rec department at five-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand. Municipal court, three-ninety-nine. Council initiatives and service organizations. So we'll kind of get into what those details look, those details look like. And then the building and fire safety division at two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand. So the police department, as I mentioned, this does include an additional patrol officer. It assumes that we're going to fill the digital records clerk. That was actually an authorized part-time position this year, but has not yet been filled. It's being advertised right now. So if it's not filled this year, we want to continue it into next year. We do have an additional patrol vehicle in the capital budget. Continued investment in technology. Chief and assistant chief Brown have been implementing mobile data terminals within the police vehicles, and that helps them with self-dispatching out in the field. It also includes in the police department, some funds for community outreach. So whether it's shop, shop with a cop, or the free movie nights with, with the police department and food, things like that, just more community outreach to make policing, frankly, less scary and to let people know that, you know, the police officers are here to help them and help with that community relationship building. And then it also includes continuation of our school resource officer contract with the school district. In the rec division, we're assuming that next year is going to be a return to normalcy and that like this year, we were, that we'll be able to do our kids' camp, which is super popular in the summer, our adult and kids' recreation programs. And then we do want to continue the community festivals, the free music in the park over the summer. The service organizations, the policy that the council has adopted in the past has been to utilize three percent of our projected sales tax revenues in the general fund for nonprofit organizations. That would be a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, there's other nonprofits that are being funded in different areas of the budget. So this, this is one pot where council receives applications in two different funding cycles and then gets to determine, you know, what kind of support you want to provide to those. Council initiatives slash economic development has been kind of an interesting catchall of different programs over the past. It used to be broadband development, housing and early childcare and education, as well as supported economic development organization. Since we've now proposed to create a housing division and move all of that funding there, we now have fifty thousand in there for supporting broadband development, twenty-five thousand for supporting the CDC. And then we are proposing that assistance for early childcare and education just come in under service organizations rather than have a line. But it's your budget, so you guys get to do whatever you want with it. So our capital fund, I'm sorry, this is way too small for you guys to see, so I'll make sure that you get a copy of this. But projects and operations to support various capital projects is six million dollars in expenditures. Our revenues are from sales tax and from grants. We always try to, if it's a larger project, we try to apply for grants and, if it makes sense, just to help us get some of these projects done and help leverage our taxpayer dollars. We are budgeting to spend in terms of by a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. So we do have healthy reserves. And, but I do want to make that very clear that this is a balanced budget and that we are planning to pull from reserves, but we are planning to spend to reserve by that amount. It does support the operations of our public works department, streets division, utilities division and facilities maintenance, as well as our parks maintenance division, plus all the projects, equipment and debt service on prior projects and equipment leases. Some of the highlights on capital projects, I just wanted to point out. And again, this is not inclusive of everything that's within that budget, just some of the highlights. The little asterisks mean that we have a grant that we are trying to leverage to help with it. We would really like to try to move the Harman Hill phase of the Tom Coosa Lakes Trail forward. There's still some discussions being had with CDOT and our engineering consultant on how to make that happen. And as you know, we're kind of proposing that we do that a little bit differently so that maybe we could be a secondary road network in there as part of the project. But right now, for the budget, we have a placeholder in there to just do the behavior of road intersection and connection to the courthouse area. And again, that could change within the next month or two as we get more information. We have the visitor center roof replacement slated for next year. The pickleball courts, which has been an interesting partnership. So the county has pledged a hundred thousand, tourism pledged a hundred and fifty. Pickleball club has a hundred, and so that would leave a hundred for the town to complete eight courts in Yon Gucci Park. Darren has proposed a new restroom at Mary Fisher Park, approximately where that whole changing area is, which is kind of getting a little, it's well-used and it probably needs replaced anyway. And so we talked about maybe just putting a restroom in there. That area gets a lot of visitor traffic, a lot of people going through there. So that was something that was being proposed. Our street maintenance plan, which includes all types of surface treatments, everything from seal coating to crack sealing to mill and overlay, like we did this year on Cemetery Road. That is proposed, and there's a whole list of streets in there, proposed at seven-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars. New trail and sidewalk sections, unfortunately, not as many as we would like to do, but there are some small ones in there. Sidewalk maintenance, street light poles, drainage improvements and parks equipment. The Rumble Creek Bridge restoration project, phase two, is partially funded by a grant from the state historic fund, and that is included in here as well. We want to finish the multimodal fund, East End Gateway planning project that's kicking off now. We're assuming that that's going to take us into August of 2022 to be completed. And that's just the planning. Then once we identify all of the different improvements, which I'm guessing there should be many, then we can go after grants, we can go after additional funding to implement those. And the first street, Highway one-sixty crosswalk improvements. James just got word that our plan was approved, and so he submitted the grant for revitalizing main streets. And we're hoping to complete that next year as well. In terms of equipment and vehicles, we do have a police patrol vehicle in here. We have two town pool travel vehicles. Just a little bit about the town pool travel vehicles. These are just ones that everybody is using, that are not assigned to a specific department like police or public works or something like that. Our newest one in the town pool is from 2013. So it's really time that we get rid of some of these that are really, they're, they're really aging out and we're spending a lot of money trying to repair them. So we're proposing two Blazers, I think they are. A maintenance van for facilities. Parks and recreation requested a skid steer. And public works streets division requested a truck with a plow and sander box. And then there's some smaller equipment items in there as well. All right, sanitation fund. So this is a separate fund, a separate district. The council also services the sanitation district board. And so we're actually going to have a meeting after this to introduce the sanitation budget, but I'm kind of doing it now. It is an enterprise fund, which means that it must be largely self-supporting through collection fees and tab fees. Operationally, in terms of the town, it's part of our utilities division in terms of management structure. So our utilities employees, which we have a utility operator and a utility supervisor, serve as staff for the sanitation district. We have a collection-only system. And I'm not going to throw all this other stuff, but basically, it's, it needs, needs some help. Revenues, it is structurally imbalanced, which means that every year, we are spending into reserves to fund our operations and maintenance. We have many, many needed capital improvements, capital improvements like replacing collection lines, upfitting our manholes, certain air pump stations that are being put on the background, but we just don't have the money to do it. Our revenue assumptions is that we're going to bring in one-point-seven. Our revenue assumptions is that we're going to bring in one point seven million in the annual revenues, fifty-four percent of that coming from monthly collections, thirty-seven percent from state health department grant and from American Rescue Plan funds, which can be spent very clearly on infrastructure. And then the remainder comes from potential tap fees and things like that. Each year we budget, an assumption that we're going to get fifteen new taps per year, but really it depends on development activity. We could be way off on that, and it's just for assumption purposes. We are assuming that the sanitation board will increase the monthly service charge to forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and that's based on the rate study that was completed a few years back. We're also assuming that the capital investment fee would increase, or the top fee would increase to four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars per equivalent unit, also based on that rate study. In terms of expenditures, we are planning on spending into reserves by a hundred thousand dollars. One point eight million is our expenditures. Paws charges us a treatment rate each year, which is based on per thousand gallons, and it's a dollar ninety-two per thousand gallons for this next year. That number fluctuates from year to year, they basically back into it based on their budget and the number of gallons that we think are going to be transported for their treatment. So that's an assumption of a hundred, of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar expenditure. We do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars slated in 2022 and beyond in our capital plan for phase replacement of those collection lines, but that's really just a drop in the, in the bucket to, to do what needs to be done there. We have continuing debt service on this pipeline project. We owe both the state and Paws. And we also, even though we paid off the back truck and tried to save some interest there, we do have to, the sanitation fund has to pay back the general fund over the years ago, I think it's seven years. We are planning a full pumps replacement project at pump station one and two due to the repeat failures of those pumps. The cost of the project is estimated to be eight hundred thousand dollars. Thankfully, we received a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the state health department, but our match is four hundred. That project is in the engineering phases right now, and we are hoping that it will be done by the spring. Crossing our fingers, again, we have two employees within the sanitation who serve the sanitation district, and they also service the geothermal. Bookkeeping, auditing, attorney services, et cetera, provided by other town staffing contractors, and then we do charge a proportional amount to the sanitation fund. Quickly, our geothermal fund is miniscule, fifty-five thousand dollars in annual expenditures. We're assuming a hundred and twenty-one thousand in revenues next year. It has no dedicated employees as part of our utilities division. We have about thirty-three customers. The rate is flat that we charge, we actually don't meter that, and then the amount hasn't changed maybe ever for several years. So I don't know if the council wants to consider a change to that. At one point, it was, you know, we were trying to get people on to book into the geothermal, so we didn't want to make it too expensive, but by time. We are assuming that we're going to be able to use American Rescue Plan funds again for infrastructure, sixty-two thousand dollars in revenues. And then we're hoping that there's going to be some new connections in 2022. There is a new development that's planned by the geothermal building, which could need to some new tap fees there. Again, this one is also structurally imbalanced in that we sometimes are spending into reserves just for operations. We did a condition assessment and utilization report in 2020 that revealed a lot of aging infrastructure. Unfortunately, we're only able to put in ten thousand dollars in line replacements for next year. This year, we did do a very large, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar project, I think it was, to put in new geothermal distribution line with public gate creek project that's going on. For the tourism fund, which is sometimes called lodger's fund because it derives solely from lodging tax, it's four point nine percent is the town's lodging tax, and the county's is one point nine percent. We have an IGA in place where a hundred percent of those funds come into the tourism fund. The Pagosa Area Tourism Board serves as the guiding board, advisory board for that, and all of the employees and contractors who serve with the lodger's fund, our town employees. We are assuming that 2022 revenues are going to be similar to our assumptions for year end 2021, which ended up being much better than what we had initially anticipated. We are assuming one point five million roughly in estimated expenditures for next year. One big item that I do want to point out is they have proposed a five hundred thousand dollar infrastructure line item, which could be utilized for projects that benefit both visitors and our local community. And this has been kind of a, a nice partnership in different ways over, over the years. They have committed to providing funds for pickleball, the two of a hundred and fifty thousand, but there's still leaves quite a bit left for matching other types of projects. So we keep that one in mind. They have really laid out exactly what those projects might be, but I think they're always open to proposals. The conservation trust fund is another small fund. It derives from state lottery funds, and those proceeds come to local governments based on population. They can only be used for parks, recreation, and trails. The town's allocation is about seventeen thousand dollars each year, which is a drop in the bucket in terms of how much we actually spend in providing parks and recreation services for the community. But every little bit helps. So that seventeen thousand is the town's allocation, the county contributes sixty thousand, and if you remember, it used to be thirty, but the county did double that through the IGA that was executed in 2019. And then the county also committed to providing a hundred thousand dollars from their allocation of conservation trust funds specifically for the pickleball project. It does help to fund some park improvements and partially relieve the capital fund, but it's, it's a small amount compared to, to our total expenditures. We're planning on bringing in a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenues, which includes that county's allocation for the pickleball, and then a hundred and sixty-five thousand in expenditures. Darren would like to do some improvements to the irrigation system at Sentinel Park, and then of course, the pickleball courts project is partially funded out of this. The impact fee and trust fund is just a kind of mismatch of a bunch of restricted accounts and line items, but they're restricted funds for various purposes that are all kind of in one fund. So council eliminated the impact fees back in 2019. Our last deferral agreement is people are paying on that right now, and so going forward, we should have no more impact fees coming in. Council did adopt an ordinance to spend out balances on eligible projects, which we have done. The other restricted accounts or line items within this fund include our reservoir hill ticket tax, the health account, which as I mentioned, is where we receive our refund of, you know, through our health plan, we have lesser claims than, than what was anticipated. The workforce housing, S T R surcharge, so anytime there's a vacation rental, whether it's a new one or a renewal, half of that goes into this restricted account to be spent on workforce housing projects. And then we also have the perpetual maintenance fee for cemetery maintenance at Hilltop. And there's some other little things in there too that, within the budget details. Unfunded requests. So ultimately, we are limited by the resources that we have, and as you know, in some funds, we are planning to spend into reserves. But there's a lot more requests out there for things that we either don't have a good estimate on, or we just don't know what council wants to do with it. Ruby's System Library is doing a capital campaign right now, and as you know, they have requested funding from the town. They've requested twenty thousand dollars each year over three years. That's not in the proposed budget, but of course, this is your budget, so you guys get to decide if you want to add these and stripe other things out or whatever you want to do. In addition to that project, I do want to mention that the town would like to do something in conjunction with this project if, if it wanted to move forward to improve access in the alley there between eighth and tenth. It functions not very well as a, as a through street, it's very narrow. We do have some funding in our street maintenance plan, proposed for, for 2022 that would do some surfacing on it, but it's really not going to get us, you know, if we want to acquire additional easements or something to widen that and make it a more functional street. And honestly, I don't know what the timing is on that, but just wanted to put that out there. The Food Coalition is trying to develop a food distribution hub out at the fairgrounds, and they have asked, not necessarily seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the town, but that's their, their goal, to raise capital funds to build that building. And then they also have a request for operating assistance. The Hot Springs Boulevard South reconstruction project. So if you recall, we put in a revitalizing main streets grant application. We were not funded in the first round, but there's a second round of funding apparently. So we're going to try to submit that grant request again and see if we get it. The overall project cost is about one point four million, give or take, but we didn't put that in the budget, including, you know, our match or that revenue assumption without knowing if we were going to get the grant. But that is something that's out there. With all the proposed development and things that are already underway at Hot Springs, this is going to, I think, need to happen before, before too long. The First Street pedestrian bridge, another cut bridge over the river. This one would connect kind of the malt shop area with the area behind the museum. We're estimating, that's going to be about eight hundred thousand dollars, give or take. And again, we're seeking a grant for that, so there's nothing in the budget right now for that. The Pagosa Wetland Partners had multiple requests for different things to, I guess, implement some of their objectives. One is they would like to build an osprey nesting site. They would also like to build a viewing tower. Frankly, staff has some concerns about a building a viewing tower down there and what, you know, what that might look like in terms of management and things like that. But they would like to build a viewing tower to look at birds and things like that. And there's also a request for a grant match to do some scientific studies of the geothermal waters through the wetlands. So it's about fifty thousand dollars, give or take, and again, I don't know where they are with that. We suggested that they, you know, do a little bit more research on that and then also talk to the parks and rec board to get their, to get their buy-in on that. We would like to do a traffic study, and as you know, the main street reconstruction project is imminent. CDOT is, has found funding to do that corridor improvement project, and we want to be ready with our part of the funding for that. Some of those projects may change depending on, you know, where, where we want to go with that. We're actually going to be meeting with some of the CDOT, CDOT staff on Monday. And so we would like to do a traffic study, we would also like to do some secondary roads planning and the parking, but that's not in the budget because we really have no idea what that amount will be. We need to get some information from CDOT and get an RFP out once we have some guidance from them. Police department requested a second new vehicle that is not in the budget. They, so we do have one in there, but they wanted another new one, but it's not in there. The town hall remodel, we have a firm right now that is taking a look at ways to better utilize the areas within town hall and to help with security and new better access and things like that. With DHS moving out, ideally, I think it's in the first quarter of next year, we would be poised to occupy that space and maybe, you know, do some things differently. We put fifty thousand dollars in the budget, but depending on which options they come up with and what council wants to do, that might not be enough to accomplish those objectives, but we'll see. And then finally, property purchases is always top of mind with those property for workforce housing objectives or river access or what have you. We didn't put any number in there because we're really not sure what that amount should be. Finally, my last slide. The next steps in all of this is we would like to schedule some work sessions with the council to really go through all the budget details and to get your feedback. So we're just kind of throwing it all at you tonight. We're not expecting a big discussion on it or anything, it's really just kind of the first blush, but we would like to get your feedback on scheduling those work sessions. And in the past, we've done to, what we can do as many as you guys would like and have the time and interest for. And then of course, we also want to encourage the public to participate and provide feedback on, on these different proposals. So with that, I will stop sharing and, so, thank you. Thanks for listening to that. I guess we just need to maybe talk about some potential dates and times, and I'll have to get back with two Mads to see if those will work for them. But if you have maybe a couple of dates and times that you can throw out, that would be helpful.
Okay, as far as your timetable, what would be best? Whether it gives you time to give us time to kind of review the budget going into the first session, and then give you time to adjust and do whatever for the second. So what should that look like?
I think ideally, if we could get the first one scheduled by the end of the month, right?
I don't know if this kind of is work session.
I don't know if we have anything planned for the 28th really, but yeah, so we could use that placeholder for your monthly work session as the first or second.
Okay, so the 28th, what does that look like for everybody? Let's get a lay of work session. So I'm not going to do it, that's already blocked out for me, so you will be handling it. So the first one? Five o'clock?
Yeah, so typically, our budget work sessions we schedule for three hours, is that correct? Instead of our secondary two hours?
Yeah, but you know, we're flexible, and this is really for you guys, so, you know, we'll bring whatever information you all want and, you know, present whatever you think you want to see, but it's really up to you guys in terms of how long it lasts.
I mean, it seems like we've always filled that time, we've never, I feel like we've never been satisfied on the first go-to month early, so. I would say we probably should do that kind of three-hour time frame if you guys are okay with that.
Okay, so the 5:00. Okay, that'd be the 28th. Next one? How soon can it go? Do you know that much?
Well, do you? So this is your second one, your public notice, right? No, this is okay. So maybe this week? You have anything here? You could either do later this week or for this week.
So you're thinking the second week in November?
To do the night, that Tuesday?
It's the night of November. I have a lot of work.
At five?
It worked okay.
Is that the same time as planning for this?
Yes.
It's okay, remember we're meeting here. We could also do Wednesday or Wednesday or any of those other days. I just think that week would probably be good.
Well, you can see steering committee's on it.
Okay, how about the 11th? That's better today, right? Yeah, I mean, town hall, that's what we observed on Tuesday.
Okay, again, in the evening, I'll be playing.
I'll do one, okay.
Same time conference.
Monday, the eighth?
Monday, the eighth? Monday, let's try Monday, the eighth.
Monday, the eighth, okay. Great, thank you. I'll send out notices to, to Matt and to all of you as well. Thank you, appreciate it. And then also, you know, before the next work session, if you're, as you're going through the budget and you have questions or you think you have any more information on this or that, just, just let me know, just contact me, and we'll make sure that we, we prepare that for you. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you for all that work. I'm glad you're doing that. All right, let's look out to our next item of new business, which is early childcare and education funding.
That's new. I could refuse myself because one of these licenses on grandlives, make sure it's a lawyer.
Okay.
I'll just go all the way.
I'm glad to remember to call you back.
All righty, thank you. And I appreciate you guys sitting through the budget. It was a lot of work and you did a fabulous job. She can't give the applicants because she spearheaded the whole thing.
It was.
It was. So early childcare and education funding. So if you remember this budget, we gave $25,000 to go to one of your priorities that were about the early childcare and education. Back in July, we received three applications from CISA Learning, from Head Start, and Lumiings. And we awarded $7,500 to each of those three. That was the, the, I think, we could receive. So at that time in July, we avoided $22,500 of the $25,000 that we budgeted. That was $2,500. We were, we were tasked with asking in-home daycares. We originally had asked them if they wanted to apply, and we didn't get any responses. So we extended the deadline and we went to them and tried to get more of them to apply for the funding that was, that was available with a max of $1,500. We did receive two. We received one from Shonda Martinez for $1,500. And her application is in there as well as Tiffany Wilkins. She didn't put that amount on hers. The, like I said, the max that we had asked them to apply for was $1,500. So between those two, again, you have $2,500 left in that line item. Or, you know, if you decide you want to give each of them $1,500, going over that, that budget line item, $1,500 won't make a, you know, a difference for the funding at this point, so that's an option as well. Just a thought, do you have any questions?
Any questions, word for one? I think it's pretty clear. We got two, we got $2,500 and the range of three, and given the votes, the session was the same, correct?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Do we request any, like, receipts or is there anything followed with this? Or is it just kind of looking at the money?
Yeah, we don't ask for receipts. We don't ask, in fact, we didn't ask to look at their financials, their receipts, and those guys have to give us, you know, their P and Ls and background and stuff like that. Of course, they're all nonprofits. But, but the in-home daycares, we made it just as simple and easy. No, no receipts. You know, and they did put on there some of the items that they thought they would purchase with the money, with the funds. But no, we're not going to, we're not going to ask them to give us any kind of receipts on what we sent them.
Well, I like that we made it so simple. I do, you know, I want to make it as, as non-intimating as possible, but I do feel a little weird about this request for $1,000.
Yeah, I, I had gotten that, I didn't, didn't target Tiffany. I think she, I guess my, you know, she said just to split between all the licensed daycares. I don't know how many are out there. So, and because they didn't apply on their own, I feel like, well, maybe if we give her the $1,500, if she feels the need to divide it between whoever she feels, you know, should get it, that would...
Right, I can't make somebody apply, right?
Well, it's something, I was, I was a little bit confused by that one too. Because it almost makes me, the wording makes me think that she was just going to apply for whatever was unallocated to be received to her. Because she goes in pretty specific detail about what she would make improvements on.
Right.
And so I think it was just a little bit misinterpreted wording, awkward wording? I'm not sure. But I think after reading through her, her letter, it sounded like she was just applying for something so that she could make these improvements, but she didn't want... It sounded like she didn't want me to ask because she felt like that would take away from other people's asks.
Right.
Does that make sense? But it's how I interpreted it.
Well, I'm glad we got a couple applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to make a comment?
Sure.
I, I was suggesting maybe we split the difference and not go over the budget. Like, well, our first vote, we go over the budget.
So did you think to do $1,000 to Tiffany? Oh, $1,000, okay.
Give it to you guys, that's very important, right?
Or just, it's like, you know, $1,500 to Shonda, which is what she requested, and then $1,000 to Tiffany, which would be the remaining of the allocated, unallocated.
I prefer to do the same amount to each. I just kind of feel like I don't really want to penalize her for, like, maybe not being as aggressive as she could have been in her ask, you know, maybe like, I don't know. Fair?
And they both have a similar amount of kids and families they serve, so it's equivalent to me.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Go ahead.
I have moved to approve early childcare education funding of $1,250 to Shonda Martinez in-home daycare center and $1,250 to Tiffany Wilkins.
Second? Do you have a second? All in favor, if you have a second.
Aye.
Motion. So when you notify them, just let them know that we had $3,000, we had the amount left that we had, and we just divided it equally for what that was.
Okay. I will be back when you're there.
All right, let's move on now to item number three, which was a resolution. Twenty-one dash sixteen supporting submitting a technical assistance grant application to the Sonoran Institute.
James? Thank you, town council, very good. This is coming to you as a request from the Dr. Water Smart Work Group. Our current work group attended a free session with Smart Institute earlier this year. And it's their second time around with getting that free funding for attending that work session with them. And that opens us up to applying for technical assistance grant funding from them. And what we've come up with, current work group, the first time we did this, we went through a, did a local population growth projection for our community. We really felt that the biographer's office was always really on the high end. So we went through that exercise with the technical assistance grant we received last time. I think it was pretty beneficial to understand our, our past growth rates and what we could project in the future, although COVID may have messed with that projection a little bit. But generally, we're looking at about a 2% average of what we're looking at, you know, for the next 30 years. For this technical assistance grant, we're looking at a few items we want to include in this up to $10,000 technical assistance grant. And this is a no-match grant. And Sonoran Institute will give us the flexibility of either executing a contract directly with a consultant and being repassed through. So in essence, we'd be paying bills and requesting reimbursement from the Sonoran Institute. Or Sonoran Institute can be the physical sponsor as well and pay the contractor directly once we improve those invoices. So they're pretty flexible. This grant is really easy to administer, it's not complicated at all. So again, no match. But we're looking at, looking at getting a better understanding of our water supply and demand situation in our community. Doing some education for citizens on water issues, introducing water efficiency measures, and developing an ongoing program to improve watershed health. So that is a lot to include in this $10,000. But the group wanted to kind of address all these in this next round of technical assistance. So we, I did want to mention that the, the current members of the work group are included representation from the Tamaulipas Springs, myself, Archuleta County, the San Juan Water Conservancy District, Community Development Corporation, Chamber of Congress, Archuleta County Extension, CSU Extension Office, and Oz is also participating in that work group. So if you're considering this evening as a resolution, supporting the work group applying for that grant, and really the town would be the sponsor of that grant application, so we administer any requirements for reporting or processing invoices from a person who already decided to do that.
Any questions for you? Go ahead. How much staff time do you think that will take?
Not much more than what I already spent on the work group. So I think generally, I would say with the course of the six months, we would typically go through this process as a ten hours total maximum.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion? Motion? Go ahead.
We need a recommendation, is this a motion? Do you need a motion?
For a resolution?
So I'm looking to make a motion, is that right? I need to approve resolution two zero two one dash one six supporting submitting a technical assistance grant application to the Sonoran Institute.
Seven.
Number seven, all in favor, if you have a standing eye.
Aye.
You know, turn up the research. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's go on now then. That was our last item of business on this agenda, except for public comment.
I have a question. Madeline, is it Mally or Madeline?
I have one.
Okay. Are you the one that did the painting downtown under the bridge?
Um, I can't claim full credit, I was a sidekick artist. So my friend Kelly Lewis is the mastermind behind that piece, and she invited me to participate in the painting.
I just think that's beautiful, Don.
Thank you.
I didn't know that was happening, and so I just really liked it.
Thank you. And it was so awesome being down in that spot too, because of all the good traffic. The interaction we got from people, it was really positive. And I think that we shared a lot of, like, hooray art everywhere. So yeah, hopefully we can keep that momentum going, so thank you.
May I ask your name?
Ellen Schmidt.
Thank you.
472 Meadows Street.
Okay, we'll take other congressmen like that.
It will, it's very... Anyone would like to call out some of the... That's probably the best part of the conference, that ever.
Which spot is it? Where is it at? The bridge? Across the street from the Happy Days? Right there, it's bears. So this is just a few pages out of the seventy-eight page housing study that was done for Housing Solutions in Durango by Root Policy Research. And if anybody wants the whole document, I'd be glad to email it to you. But this was, this was a few pages that are specifically about, because they looked at all of the, all the counties in the Southwest and, in Southwest Colorado. And just highlighted a couple of, a couple of things that I noticed. And I'm, I'm really excited about the ideas in this budget to create a housing department. I thought this was kind of an interesting graph. It, it shows the, the personal income trends. And if you look, about 60% of our population was earning their income up until 2019. And it's down to 50% of our population is earning their own income. And I don't know what that means exactly, but I think it's a very interesting change to our community. Could, could mean that they're gone or could mean something else, I don't know. On this page, it has the blue lines going across, and it says, which did mean? Almost half of the STRs in the whole region are in Pagosa Springs. According to this study. I thought that was a very interesting comment, because we're about 10% of the population of the Southwest Orange, Colorado. And, and the second to last page, I thought there was an interesting comment there. Look at the second to last page, or third to last page? Third to last page. It has a, it has a circular shape on it and a gentleman. Their estimate was that we need 800 workforce housing units in our community, in Archuleta County. So raw, or for, for moving in with your housing department, we will, we get to do some things in the right way. Thanks. And if you want, if you want the rest of it, I'd be glad you could help. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, I already emailed it to you guys a few weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
But if you didn't get it for some reason, you know.
All righty, anybody else?
Just really quick, what is that document? Thanks, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any council comments or upcoming agenda items?
I just, just want to bring up, I'll be resigning from the planning commission in the morning, that's, that's appropriate. I'd like to retain my seat on the Land Use Development Code Rewrite Steering Committee, unless you need one sees a conflict there, but I should not do that.
I do not see a comment. Do you see a comment?
Well, we're, well, it's, uh, the Land Use Development Code, so we want to retain that. I mean, what should you say? No. I'll start my position, I can advise, okay to advise. Did you want me to advise on this, Mr. Fran?
Please, I think if we can, definitely.
So even a committee, even a volunteer committee or a position on a commission or subcommittee carries with it certain advisory powers that come up to town council for decision-making. Now that council member, Posey, is a decision-maker, he no longer, in my opinion, sit as an advisory member of a planning commission and/or subcommittee of any of those bodies.
Well, I think that's, that's the information that all of the council has had pretty much. And so that's just a simple statement. So if you're not advisable, I guess that answers your question from the legal council.
Okay.
Maybe that sucks, but you know. Yes, go ahead.
So they're having some items that have been brought up by members of the public and also just previous items that we wanted to make sure we were on the same page in terms of preparing them for your next agenda, which will be October 21st. We do have on there this issue of just discussing further the plastic bag ban and polystyrene, polystyrene foam containers. So I had provided an update to council on the statewide law that's going to be implemented over the next couple of years. And a couple of council members wanted to just discuss this further and see if there's something locally that you wanted to do, so I was going to put that on there. Also, the cemetery rules and regulations, we'll be coming back to you now that you had a discussion for a resolution. Valid questions, there have been several that have been proposed by members of the public and also things that council members have talked about in passing. And so I was going to just put that on there as a potential item as well for discussion and guidance as to whether you wanted to take action on, on any of those tax questions or, you know, charter amendments or what have you. So I've got those three things. I believe James is working on some development-related items to bring. And I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything else that was top of mind that has come up for council that I'm missing to go.
Have you, can you request a presentation from our winters?
Sure. Yes, yeah, that would be a great idea. I'll just try to caution them to keep some of the specifics out of it, I guess, in terms of, like, potential, I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's always touchy when you're talking about specific parcels, especially if it's not even listed or totally, or things like that. So I know they're preparing some information to share with you, but I'll just try to caution them to keep it more general, if that's okay.
Right. I think there'd be some items, I would just feel good if I knew that they had in fact followed a body. Right, I think there'd be some items I would just feel good if I knew that they had in fact followed our body and could say it across, like, yes, we should keep talking to them or no, like.
And maybe we could, yeah, if it's about a potential parcel or acquisition, we might want to do specific executive session. If we're going to talk about negotiations and stuff.
And I want to clarify my advice there. Will I talk through that? One thing that comes up a lot with council members is that you do sit on certain committees and enact as liaisons for those committees. And so I would revise my statement to say insofar that if the committee is simply the steering committee and where you, where you act as a liaison between town government and some sort of, uh, work group, et cetera, as long as that work group committee is not participating in quasi judicial functions or you are actually giving advisory things to the council, then you probably not have a conflict. And insofar that I see that the Langus Development Co. committee is just that, it's a liaisoning between town councils intent and the committee's goal of revising our Langus Development Code to fit into our, um, new intent and projects, goals, et cetera. I would retract the previous statement and say I don't think that would qualify as a direct conflict, I do not think they're even giving advice to the planning commission, I believe they're just, um, more along like a work group. Is that correct?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, because I got, I got, I was like, do you just migrate?
I, I immediately attached the L E D C committee to, like, the planning commission and then I had to unwind that, my mind. So, there you go.
Okay.
Yeah, so like, well, if you're like, yeah, if you're talking about specific policy, then you might not want to have the double. But yeah, I was really confused with the tourism board and then where to get those.
Yeah, I want to say, I want to.
Sweet, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Clear.
Good work. Clear.
Um, what do we got? On our discussion for potential, um, charter amendments, do you want to know those in advance or you just bring them that day?
I was just going to know, put it on as a discussion, um, and not prepare, I mean, so if you were going to put forward a question to the voters, you have to pass an ordinance and everything and that would have to be teed up for future meetings, so I was going to just make it a very general discussion item that could be kind of all inclusive because, I mean, as you know, you've heard about the different tax proposals that could or could not be, you know, town specific or maybe county specific, um, reallocation of lodgers tax has been one thing, but also some charter amendments in terms of how we operate and things like that, so I was just going to kind of lay out the ones that I've heard of and I think might be coming forward or have been proposed in different forms and then also just leave it open for other potential ones that we can forward, but without.
Yeah, well, I, I just would wanted to just throw out there and, and, um, we could discuss it that day. I was thinking about potentially reducing the council to five members instead of seven. Um, when it was set at seven, we had three districted seats and three at large seats. And we did away with those districted seats, so now we're all at large members. So I don't know if we could function more efficiently as a five board, five member board. I go back and forth because the discussions are nice with, amongst a lot of people, but we don't tend to have a whole lot of varying opinions, really and truly, and we pretty much with the exception of me, but. So I, I just wanted to throw it out there, let you guys, you know, consider it before our meeting. And see what we can, it would take, um, quite a number of years to implement because we have people who are already council members for a certain amount of time. And so at the next election, instead of electing three, we'd probably elect two, and then at the following election, in another four years, instead of electing three, they would elect two, then it would take, and, and play with that, the legality of how we would make that work if we decide that's something we want to do.
Interesting.
Okay, anything else? All right, then our next council meeting, we're here on October five o'clock. And now I'll accept a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can go into our G I D meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then, we're going to do now a call to order. Uh, sanitation district board meeting. And we have the same council members, first, and we now will be figuring out board members. So, first thing on the agenda is a public comment, would anybody like to make a public comment? I see no hands, so call for public comment. Now we'll get on down to the consent agenda, only one thing on it, and it's just a minute, so I'll accept a motion unless we need to change our energy.
And then we approve the consent agenda?
Second. And motion second, all in favor, six o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes in the end, this way. Okay, then, new business, Ambria, this is the twenty twenty-two, but I touched on this earlier.
Yeah.
But anything else that you need to give us?
No, I, I pretty much described what we're proposing in the presentation earlier, but I do want to just reiterate that we are proposing, um, expenditures of one point eight million. Um, all the details are in your packet, revenues of one point seven million, which means spending into reserves, one hundred and four thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Um, some of the major projects that we're going to be tackling within the sanitation, uh, district are the pump, uh, replacement project at a cost of eight hundred thousand dollars. Luckily, we have a four hundred thousand dollar grant to assist in that and Martin is going to give you an update on the pump stations. Um, but that is, um, the revenue to assume an increase, um, as we have in the past, um, each year, to the monthly service charge as well as the, um, capital investment fees. Um, I will, I guess, just end it there since the details are all in your packet and in your binder, I know we're going to be getting into those details um, at your budget work session on twenty eighth, so, there you go.
Any additional questions? Let's move right on, so the next thing is an interesting situation, to say the least. And I'll turn it over to Martin for the pump station update.
Evening board, Martin Schmelt, local vice director, nice to meet you. So, this is a pretty short brief, it explains that since the last time I talked to the board, we've experienced two more pump failures. Um, staff was able to make the adjustments and move the pumps around, uh, to keep the sewage pumping. We are currently out of spare shuffleable pumps. And, uh, as it says in here, American Technical Team in Farmington, um, said that they were unable to rebuild any of the pumps, they actually came up today, so I have an update to this brief. Uh, they came up and they did an, uh, electrical test on one of the pumps that we have up here that had been assumed to be dead. Um, and it is probably functional, but it's wet on the inside because of seal failures. Um, and they went through a pump that they had diagnosed as dead in, um, Farmington and determined they actually probably could get it to, to work with bearings and seal replacements. Um, so we do have the option to rebuild a pump and that's information that I got just a couple of hours ago. Um, so it's news and data. This rebuild could take about a month, uh, depending on how far out the skill are the bearings or if they're available. These are the older blacks original Salzer pumps, the ones that have lasted longer than the other ones. And they would be potentially a spare pump for the future redesign, um, for web well application only. Um, so there is the potential that if we rebuild one of these pumps, it could stick around and be a spare even after the purchase of the new pumps, again for web well application only. The downside is rebuilding this pump, it would not be at a hundred percent because we can't hit the volute, um, the actual part that sits around the impeller, the impeller or the wear plate, um, in less than about twenty-five weeks. So if we were to rebuild this pump to try to utilize it in our other stations as a spare, um, it would, it would not be at full capacity, but that is the case with all of our pumps of this. Um, the cost for doing that would be between ten and thirty thousand dollars to do the, uh, the rebuild. We're probably in about two thousand dollars now for doing the investigation of the rebuild. Um, figuring out which pumps might be able to be rebuilt. So that's an update that's not in the brief, but I'm sharing with you guys today because I just got that information today. Um, so we do have that opportunity. Um, we are in contact, um, with another company, Cogent, um, that rents a very large diesel powered pump that, um, would work as a short term bypass pump, um, in an emergency situation. The rental for that is about fifty-five hundred dollars a month and delivery is between two and three thousand dollars to get the shipment here. Um, the good thing about that is, in an emergency, if it happens tonight, they can get us, get it to us in twenty-four hours. Um, and we have the parts to be able to install it into our existing system. Um, so we pump it uphill, um, just the way it currently is. We place that one at pump station one for a couple of reasons, we have the overflow tank there, so we would actually fill the overflow tank and then pump it down, um, basically creating pump jockeying to quite well, um, to take care of the kind of situation that would occur. Uh, the others that we don't have, oh, few reason enough, the others that we don't have, we have some homes, but not quite like Timber Vic where we reset diesel generating pump in the middle of the, um, the, uh, mountaintop neighborhood. Uh, we do everything we could to screen that diesel generator pump, uh, closest adjacent neighborhood, you know, the school is to the north, but we have a neighborhood across the water there. So, uh, that is the, uh, the pump that was mentioned in the brief as well, um, so that is, you know, we had the opportunity to do that. Um, they could begin the shipping process to Pagosa Springs as early as tomorrow, um, to have it on site. So that if we do have a failure, we have the pump here and it's ready to go and we're not calling someone over and like, you know, trying to pick them to ship it. They do what's called hot shotting of the pump, where they can get it to us in twenty-four hours with the price to go up on the shipping. If they ship it here, whether we run the pump or not, the rental starts. Um, the one, the other option we have for pumps is buying a pump from Salzer, um, at over fifty thousand dollars. And these would be the blue pumps that have failed, the, the ones that we bought, um, that sheer shafts have failed. Uh, we currently have none of them operational before we purchased. And, uh, those are the only ones that are, we would be able to get in less than thirty weeks from Salzer. And staff feels like that is the, the least option. When you kind of do the math, you could do the rental at fifty-five hundred a month for up to ten months before we're going to be paying the same as buying one of those Salzer pumps. And with that rental pump with the brakes, there should be another rental pump. Um, so that's a nice guarantee there. Uh, the rebuild has some, um, good things to go with that too, it would slip into the existing alignment, it could be potentially usable in the future with the new pumps. Um, once they're delivered, Fairbanks, Pentair, um, the downside is that they, that's a month, that's a month out. Um, so if we have a failure in two weeks, we're still calling up our, um, diesel powered pump guy and having him ship it to us. Um, and so staff has been weighing these different options. Um, and we really want to pursue, uh, with the information I got today, and I, I really feel comfortable pursuing the rebuild of that Salzer pump because it has some application in the future, um, and it would work in the current system without an ongoing rental rate. Um, and then keeping that mental pump that's unsecured as that, um, worst case scenario, um, pumping solution in case a failure occurs before the rebuilding is done. American Technical is very aware of the urgency of this situation, they've been a part of rebuilding our pumps since the very beginning. And the reason is that they're one of the companies clear to rebuild pumps that maintains warranty. They're, they're known for the work they do on pumps, so. The other thing is, um, staff is continuing to work with Pentair Fairbanks on the new pump purchases. Um, we have, I had my dad drive one of the pieces of our old pumps back to Kansas City and drop it off, um, so that we didn't have to ship it. Um, that's where my folks live. We, we cleaned it really well. In order to, in order to make sure they had everything that would fit together and made up and work together. But we are in the middle of the submittal process, and so that's working with their engineers to make sure that every loop, every impeller and everything works well together. I know that they have finished some of the submittals and turned them into the manufacturers. Pumps like these are just like everything else in the world, where somebody builds the impellers, somebody builds the line for the motors, somebody builds the case. And so some of this stuff has been submitted to be built, some of it's pre-standard, um, and some of it has not been. Um, they have requested that everything that they've submitted be fast tracked, um, because of our situation. And there's not much more that I can do, um, I send them an email, um, once a week, every week, if not more, um, asking for updates and, um, offering support from town staff in any way, shape or form that we can. Um, once the submittals are done, which basically means everything's finalized from Pentair Fairbanks, um, we're going to put together a meeting that's going to include our skated engineer, our, um, staff engineer, rear guns, all this. Um, and, uh, our contractor who's going to do the installation and, um, both Pentair Fairbanks and town staff. So that's going to be everybody that's involved in the project, we're going to sit down in one Zoom slash in-person meeting and, um, hash through the whole project from pump delivery through completion of the installation and make sure every question, electricians, I know I forgot something, electrician loss. But, uh, make sure that everybody has gone through every step, so when we go forward with the pump installation, everyone that's there knows everything that they need for the whole of the comprehensive, maybe rebuild or something like that. Um, and so that's the next step as far as what I am going to be coordinating from the town perspective on this project. Otherwise, it's considered a motion of their fair things. With that, uh, I'm open for any questions, please, if I have.
Just a question for clarification, are we looking at one special pump that we were looking to replace that big, built new? Or are we looking at more than one pump?
Uh, from Mendez or Rex, we're looking at a total of eight pumps, four each pump station, but, um, there's four of each kind. So we'll have a specific web well pump, and we'll have a specific dry pump. And I'd be glad to give anybody a tour, um, as we go through this project, doesn't smell that bad.
It doesn't, it's super informative.
Yeah, um, but yeah, we could go through and look at that if, if, um, it were to inform the decision makers to move forward with this grant project, um, and installation.
And we're hoping that when we take care of the re-engineering and installation of eight new pumps, that our system will be pretty much intact. Meaning like it should have been engineered in the first place. Good, that was the first question. Next question is that if we go ahead and we got, it's going to be a month for them to see if they can rebuild the pump, correct?
They're confident they can rebuild it, it's a month to do the work because they have to get the parts in.
Oh, do they have to take, okay, okay, months to do the work. Now, in that time, we can go ahead and, uh, if we have a failure, we can go ahead and rent. And whatever, whatever. So, would you suggest that we do that? Is go ahead and have the, see if the pumps can be rebuilt, get those rebuilt, and then go ahead, and I'd like to know when would be the best time to put one on site so we have it, so we don't have to wait twenty-four hours for that switch over?
Well, um, you may remember that Gene Tow just wrote a grant and he built an overflow tank.
Okay.
Um, at PS one.
Oh, okay.
And that's a quarter million gallon, two hundred fifty thousand gallons. Right now, in the twenty-four hour period, we're in, we're between about two hundred fifteen and two hundred and sixty thousand gallons in twenty-four hour period. So we're right around that tank holding our flows. And that usually holds steady through the winter, um, where we're somewhere around that quarter million gallon at the peak mark. Um, it, the issue is going into spring. In the spring, that twenty-four hours shrinks to sixteen. In the spring, that twenty-four hours shrinks to sixty-eight. And that's because of the saturation of the soils, water getting into manhole lids, inflow and infiltration. That's what it's called, INI. And so because of the age of our system and just generally speaking, Paws has the same issues as because of the lakes that we do with, with INI. We have very high flows in the spring. So right now, I'm confident in the twenty-four hour time period. And we know that the pump is in, Hotwood, Texas. It's the wrong town. I Googled it, it's a twelve-hour drive. So the, the pump is twelve hours away. It's calling, getting the driver loading it and getting it here, putting it up, get that. I did talk with Chuck Fujimoto, our utility supervisor, and what the pumps we have running right now haven't done some faults or any indication that they're more than just kind of worn out, that they're going to fail. He feels pretty confident in the rebuild timeframe of a month. It will be okay. James did say that.
First, this is shipping surcharge and we have to ask them to do it in twenty-four hours.
So he said that the hot shot price was about three thousand and the normal delivery is about two thousand. So it's, it's not a huge difference between, because it has to go on a semi-truck by itself. It's that size of a generator and pump. So either way, it's a semi-truck shipment. But that's, that's the input I've gotten from the manager for the.
I mean, it seems like with this fund being so low on cash flow, that it shouldn't be sitting on it. So I also like the idea of if we have to, I mean, it's such a gamble, though, like.
We are in a position where we are making choices without a lot of good choices to make. You know, and, and so I, I try to think of the same way you are, where if we start paying this rental, we're going to pay the shipping here, we're also going to pay for it immediately. It's, it's for each direction, right? So when we ship it back to their plant, where they'll go through it before they ship it to someone else for their thing, we're going to pay for it together wherever that goes. So we need to keep, keep that in mind. The same, on the flip side of that, we really don't want us to spill. We do have low-lying areas around PS one. We do have the ability to stop any sewage that comes out of that lift station from getting to the river for a period of time. But it would be a reportable spill to CD, CDKHD, and that is what we're trying to mitigate with the pump replacement, so.
Go ahead, Sherri.
Yeah, I would be in favor of trying to repair the one, not bringing in the rental until spring and kind of seeing where we are then, knowing the INI situation. And then just seeing where we are with Penter Fairbanks and getting those things installed. And if we do lose another pump and we put the spare one in line, we can always revisit this discussion at that point.
And I agree with Sherri with what we know, but I'm also looking at you, Martin, because you understand the risks even better than we do. You've been on the ground, in the ground, just, and so you've seen it. You also have punched the numbers and you also have the same concerns that we have. And we don't want to see a spill and a major problem. Having said all that, that if you feel confident, Sherri suggests you. I feel confident with it personally, because we, we look to you. I, I don't do that other stuff. Go ahead, Sherri.
Yeah, just another question. I think from when we went on the tour down there, that we have a parcel liner and that one we're with, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, worse comes to worse, we at least have a parcel liner in, in the first one that's about a little bit of time. And then I don't know what Paws has that we can reach out to help them, that we needed to take some sewage via trucks if they have anything. I think there might be a few options that would get us past just having to have the pump sitting there waiting for it when we're not moving.
I, I think she's right, as long as that's a safe risk, so.
Something I, since you brought up, since you brought up the trucking, something I haven't shared with the board about, but it's something that we went into was trucking sewage, if that became the only option we had. And the best system for that is actually rack trucks from the oil fields. But we're talking about around thirty trips to thirty-five trips a day with semi-trucks out in the lagoons to pump that much sewage. And they're about fifty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred a day for trucking. So that's not a primary option. But it is, oh, like, everything else has failed and nothing else going. We could get some oil rich others.
And also, kind of, what is, what's our communications network? So if there is a failure, how do we communicate with the people in town? It says, how do we say, hey, we have a problem, here's how you can help?
Yeah.
Um, great, exactly, like, do not flush if you can from the next twenty-four hours. Like, what do those communication networks look like? And because that's something that could be helpful in this situation and potentially a number of other situations, so really giving those.
Yeah, so we would work with the emergency management office of the county to get alerts out through NICSOL. And of course, we have all of our social media and everything, too. So, yeah, we'd work, at that point, we would work with our emergency management.
And making sure, is that part of, you know, worst-case contingency plan is reaching out to everybody?
Right, and then we have all the homeowners' contact information. It's like phone numbers are filed in Excel, so that you can send mass text out or whatever.
Well, we all get those, so they have our emails.
Yeah, right.
So they get email out.
Yeah.
To that.
Mass emails.
And something direct, so it would be immediate, people would realize.
And some of the potential things that people could do, like hold up under laundry, hold up under dishwasher, you know, suggestions to use less water during a failure, if we did have that, that could work.
Right.
Okay, have another question?
Can I, can I have a couple of comments? So, so we've got a real short-term problem here, and that's what we were just talking about. I agree with everything. And then there's that medium-term problem where you refit the pumps and you have some spares. And then the longer term is the Panter Fairbanks, where they start over with the new pumps and everything, right? If we reach that point, is there any possible way we could get out of this business and sell, sell this deposit?
That's the ultimate goal.
Yeah, probably if we make this sweet enough deal, I don't know.
Do you have any idea what that might be?
We'd talk to them, we've had joint board meetings with them. I think we would have to really put together a package that would be, something they would want to engage in.
Of course.
So we still owe them. Yeah, it's been a long, long-term goal for sure.
Yeah, and you'll see in the budget, we actually owe them a lot of money because they pump twenty ounces.
Nice.
So, yeah.
It is, that is the definition.
Gold. Good.
It could fill you in on the background. It's been going on for many years.
I'm a part of it, I don't know all of it. Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, today, actually, you know, I just feel like this is the definition of incrementalism, is this pump project. And I realize there's some resale value for what we built. You know, and all this, any kind of get out of this. But it's like, you know, it's kind of what Mr. Williams said a little bit earlier. We need to like start thinking about real estate downtown because we can't pump sewage uphill for nine miles. Like, that's not, we keep trying. And it's like, do we just put a stop on Yamaguchi South? And, you know, it's like pickleballs and sewage leaks. Yeah, I don't know. It's hard not to just keep going fifty-day, fifty-day after this, because I don't know what our other options are, but, you know, a lot of my choices are now.
Well, we have the land down there and I can have five acres reserved.
Yeah, and a lot of it is in the flood plain, and so it's difficult. I don't think the state would allow us to rebuild the lagoon as a permanent solution, at least in that specific year. So we might have to look at potentially bringing it out of the flood plain. A lot of it's in the five hundred year, some of it's in the hundred year, so we might have to look at doing something.
Yeah, basically, we kind of looked at some of this pottery and realistically, we're still going to be pumping sewage from that low point to somewhere. If we were to try to do this now, it may not be seven miles, you know, it may only be thirty vertical feet, which is done every day. You know, and so it becomes a totally different thing to try to deal with, right? But it is something we could look at. Panter Fairbanks is confident in their solution and said that the pumps with only, like, every couple of years doing adjustments to their planes should be a fifteen to twenty-year pump before it's possible. And so it does give us that breathing room to, to think about what's the next step.
And their warranty game is strong?
Uh, yeah, it was five years on the voters. They're, they knew they'd be forever, they're one of the big players in the world.
Well, hopefully this is the solution for doing something very difficult, like pumping crap up.
And if we do have a situation where, you know, we have an additional failure, we probably would in both our emergency purchase policy and the CERF, like, we would get that rental. We would make some decisions and then, you know, have an emergency meeting of, of the sanitation board.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's go on down to the last item on the agenda, which is one that's eighteen, first reading of petition for inclusion for the hill property.
So we don't do very many inclusions. Last one, the English River Rock Estates, it's part of a major development. And that was just south of Town Hall here. This one is a little bit different type of field. It's for a currently built senior family home on one acre to the east of town. There's a photo of the map in your packet. They're to the south of the RV Resort, east of town, about six hundred feet off of the highway. They're completely surrounded by another single landlord in that area and they're on a private road. This property has had some issues keeping their septic operational and is tired of, I think they're on to their third septic installation now and want to get out of that road and just have to go through a pipe to our treatment system. The address, as listed, is ninety-nine Paul Hood Place. And at this point, it is not in the district, so it has to go through the inclusion before it can go through the connection. It is not contiguous with the district currently, it is not contiguous with town borders currently. There's nothing in the rules and regulations that just allow a non-contiguous parcel to join the district. It, it, it just needs to go through the inclusion process and we have to see that there's a positive to it doing this. The plan that has been submitted by the homeowner shows the sewer line running parallel to Paul Hood Place down to the sewer line that parallels the road in that area. There are no issues with grade, there are no issues with the other property owner. They've gotten permission from the other property owner to run right along the fence line all the way down to the roadway. And they have submitted their deposit and filled out all the attached paperwork. Staff hasn't found any reason that this should be disallowed, and so it's bringing it to the board for consideration. I do, at this time, as the second paragraph says, that the town council has expressed interest in having the GID boundaries grow with the boundaries of the town. When we start to look at these large projects that may be added into the GID collection system, they'd like those parcels to consider annexation. I brought this up with the town, the property owner, and I currently have a signed annexation agreement that was turned in to me today on my desk that would be filed with the county. It's this inclusion form. So at such time that this property met the legal requirements for annexation in the town, they would file for annexation and the town council would consider that application. Basically, it places the notice on that property order to then annex or apply to annex it to the town at such time that it makes sense. So that's, I have that documented, we would, we would file that in the town's interest with the county. So it would be attached to any documents sold, if, if that property would be sold. I concluded the inclusion ordinance, the petition for inclusion. We put it in the paper and it'll be listed in the legal section on the notarized, it's been published document for the second reading. And then I showed where the sewer and where the property is. And with that, I'm open for any questions about the hill property inclusion.
Okay, any questions?
And the, the property owner is responsible for all the digging and all of that?
Yes, so there'll be a hundred dollar application fee plus the cost of parts that we use to actually put the saddle on and put the little extension pipe to what they dig and install. So that will be the cost, but it gets billed back to them for the saddle, for anything that we have to supply or keep. We just do that little bit of work. They need to get that sewer line all the way up the road. I forgot to mention, the property owner is intending to put in a six-inch line instead of a four. In case the two houses that are upstream of the, would decide to join into the district. He wants to upsize. He said one would give us here's house, but if we add one, they are upsize the construction.
Sure.
Are those properties across the highway, what we could rent, are those in the district in our system?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nick.
If, if we had a faith in our, our sewer system, I don't know, I think I'd be in favor of this without question, but it kind of adds insult to injury to just have one more flush in a system that can barely handle what it can handle. So I, but could, could they last until Penter Fairbanks gives us an operational system? Could they go that long and redo the application in nine months or whatever it is?
I, I know that this property owner had the majority of the issues over the last few winters. Obviously, we worked about, yes, they had major freezing issues and things bubbling up.
Yeah.
A normal home is one equivalent unit in our system. It, usually a home produces between, you know, get my hours and days mixed up here, but it's, it's twenty-four gallons per hour is what is, yeah, twenty-four gallons per hour is what's assigned to a house. Fits in our one-EU structure. We're talking about pumping two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day.
Yeah.
So, well, I understand your concern, it is literally a problem, so we're going to have to go out.
And I think if we were to deny this on those grounds, we'd have to put up oratorium on the new playoffs.
Sorry.
In other words, it seems kind of inconsistent.
Yeah.
But we might practically get to that point.
Okay, any other questions? Should we, should I? Chair Leonard Kader Motion. Oh, before we do that, let's go ahead and open separate public comments. Go ahead.
I forgot to read out the ordinance for the record.
Thank you.
So this is the first reading ordinance, eighteen, series two thousand twenty-one, inclusion of Eric and Kendra Little property into the PSSG.
Thank you very much. Now we'll open separate public comment. Okay, I see no hand raised for public comment. Then any further discussion? Chair Leonard Kader Motion, let's go ahead.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance, eighteen, series two thousand twenty-one, allowing the inclusion of the Eric and Kendra Little property into the PSSG.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Open the paper, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Has to be unanimous. And thank you so much. Next board reading will be November second at five o'clock P M, so if you're listening. And now, we took the.
Second.
Second.
Second, any objection? Okay, has to be unanimous.
Recording stopped.